Welcome everyone to the City Daily Cities Recreation Commission Meeting for August 27, Tuesday 2019. And for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda, or under public appearance, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the City Council Chambers and submit to staff as early in the meeting as possible. Also, persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids, services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. May I have everyone rise for the pledge of the flag, please?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with duty and justice for all.
Okay. Joseph, may we have the roll call?
You certainly may have a roll call. Let the record reflect that Chair Christina Luna is absent and Vice Chair Luis Landos is absent. And I assume you drew straws and you are the chair this evening. So I'll go on with the roll call. Commissioner Flamenco?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
And Commissioner/acting Chair of tonight's meeting, Jack Pastor.
Here. All right. May I get an approval of this evening's agenda, please?
Cool.
Wish them to approve? Do I have a second?
Do I second that?
Okay, those in favor of approving this evening's agenda, do say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And the approval, may I get approval for last month's minutes, please? Okay. And do I have a second?
Yeah, second that as well.
Okay. Those in favor of approving last month's minutes, do say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Move us right along to the Director's Report.
Thank you, Acting Chair Jack Pastor. With us this evening, the face of the Daily Cities Summer Youth Recreation Program, Mr. David Zetzer is going to give you an overview of our summer activities that just wound down. And I appreciate David being here this evening because you can imagine from beginning of June until the middle of August, he is absolutely buried in this program. And I'll let him tell you all about it. Take it away, David.
Once again, my name is David Zetzer. I'm a recreation supervisor over the Summer Youth Recreation Program. The Summer Youth Recreation Program is 10 weeks of camp. Oh, sorry. Excuse me, I didn't change that. However, these are photos from this year that you see throughout the summer of the program that just ended. I was not able to make that one change, I apologize. The SYRP Adventure Camp is based out of four locations, Marchbank Park, Hillside Park, Gellert, and Westlake. Marchbank Park had a 235 registered participants with an average weekly attendance of 27. Hillside Park had 260 registered participants with an average weekly attendance of 29. Gellert Park had 800, I'm sorry. I know, sorry about that. Around 500 and some odd number of registered participants with an average weekly attendance of...I wrote down the numbers for Explorer Tri, so I'm sorry about that. The Westlake Park, which was a little greater than Gellert, so you can imagine how many Gellert still had, had 813 registered participants with 90 average daily, or average weekly. The two other, the Adventure Camp had participants from the age of five to 14 for Marchbank and Hillside. And Gellert and Westlake had five to 10. The 10 to 14-year-olds were welcomed into the Explorer Camp at Gellert and Westlake with a registered 260 at Gellert with an average weekly attendance of 29, and 310 at Westlake with average weekly of 34. Each week is themed. The activities, program, and schedule is based around these 10 themes. We have the themes like Pirates with Ahoy Summer. A Smore Summer has our camping. Summer the Stars is our talent show week. Hot Summer Nights, we enjoyed a family feast. These 10 weeks help create the programming that happens onsite at each individual location. Like in the photos here, you can see them dressed up for the talent show in a photo booth, having a race car and supercars with a cape on down below. Each of the weeks has multiple field trips that are associated with it. Some weeks have two field trips, some weeks have three field trips like Hyde Street Pier, bowling, Oakland Zoo, archery, California Academy of Sciences. This year, we did offer more special events than any previous summer with the addition of two new events, the Summer Kickoff and Information Night at Westlake Park, as well as the Family Feast. The Summer Youth Recreation Program works in conjunction with our Volantene Leadership Program, which I'm sure you'll hear more about in a future meeting. But statistics I could give you about it is it had 121 registered participants in the program, and they had more than 18,000 hours of logs in community service. So there were more hours given than the teens let us know about. So these are going to be some field trip videos that I'm going to show you that are posted on our Instagram and recreation page. This is our Explorer Field Trip, which are, again, the 10 to 14-year-olds. They visited Alcatraz Island. The next video recap is from our Family Feast. It was our first time running this event. It was really fun. We served families. They sat down together, ate together. We had contests, games, watched a movie, and had raffle prizes. This is our Adventure Camp, which is all ages of our program. They went and visited the Exploratory. And this was our Explorer and VLP Field Trip for the ropes course, provided through SF State's outdoor program. the explorers helped cook all the food for the kids, with help from the staff, of course. We set up tents indoors, crazy disco lights, and have a blacklight and glow party. So that's it for this summer, as far as showing you some of the fun stuff that did occur. Of the 2,394 people that registered for the summer, only around 103 were non-resident participants. So, that's it.
That's great. Thank you, David. Thank you. So they all had a lot of fun over there, especially on that challenge course with the ropes and the climbing and what have you. Now, where was that facility held at?
Um...
Is it the Presidio or something like that?
Oh, my lord. I can't remember the name.
Fort Miley?
Fort Miley. Fort Miley. Sorry about that. Yeah, Fort Miley. I probably said it 100 times over the summer and then tonight.
Well, I often wonder where it was held at. I see it all the time on the news or through here, and I just never thought to ask, where is it? Great. Thank you.
Again, I want to thank David and his staff for doing an outstanding job. I've been here seven years now, and I got to say, when there's that many kids involved in a program, over 2,000 registrants, things go wrong. And in years past, that's involved, you know, broken bones and bloody noses and other assorted problems that you might imagine. And I will have to say, of all the years I've been here, this was by far the smoothest, complaint-free. Participants loved it. And I will say too, you know, the parents out here know that the value that we provide in the Summer Youth Recreation Program is incredible compared to everything else out there.
Right.
I mean, it's what you pay in Daily City for the Summer Youth Recreation Program, probably the next closest value is about three times as much.
Right.
You know, our parents spending $500, $600, $700, $800 a week for a program. And I think our base pay, our base rate is about 90?
If you register early enough, it can be as low as, I want to say, 83.
Yes, it's quite a value.
And as the registration dates get closer, the price does increase in our tier system of early bird discounts.
Yeah.
So if you sign up early and are a Daily City resident, you are getting a good price in it.
And if you break the cost down, you know, what you're paying per hour, it's practically free. It's an amazing program.
Yeah, I want to thank you, David, also, and Joseph and the Rec Center. My kids were there. They loved it. They loved it. And last year, they were there. And this year, when I say, well, you know, we might go to the summer program in Daily City, they were so excited. And they went to Wimona Pool. We missed the sleepover because I wanted to go there, but we had something and we couldn't go. But, yeah, they were like, why we're missing it? So thank you. Yeah, you're doing a good job. The volunteers, everything is working really well. And the kids, I can see that. Every kid is like having a lot of fun.
Well, thank you very much.
All right.
The smores were really good, the popcorns, everything they were preparing. I was happy to try them all.
It was cool getting to, I actually got to go visit a couple sites throughout the summer, probably like three to four times total. And I got to really see the relationships develop between the staff, the volunteers, and all of the students. I really, like, hoped to see, like, the number of residents returning and them telling all their friends. Just because I know we're not touching quite every corner of this city just yet. But that's going to be the key thing, right? The relationships held between staff and the volunteers and all the students. And I got to see high energy throughout every, almost every time I was there, even down to the way they do lost and found. It was the funniest thing, when I seen the volunteers pretend to model off all of the lost clothes and the kids. Yeah, it's the funnest thing I've seen. So definitely props to you and your staff. It's a grind over the summer, and you just got to get through it. And you guys did a fabulous job.
Yeah, thank you.
David, just a note on the Volantines. On the board there showed about 121 Volantines help coordinate the program and what have you.
The Volantene Leadership Program is under Agardo Bolaños in the teen services area. So that program is under him, but we work closely together to have our programs coincide.
How many, not so much how many, but what percent of our new Volantines coming in and helping out versus the seasoned Volantines?
I actually don't know that number, but I do know we get a good chunk more returning faces than we do new faces.
Good.
Some of these kids, I shouldn't say kids, some of these Volantines start as kids themselves.
Right.
Enter, when they get to 14, they enter in as Volantines. And then they, we end up hiring a good number of them as summer staff when they turn 16, 17 years old.
Yeah.
We get in that process. And it's the recreation idea of we grow our own employees.
Yes.
So you do see a good chunk every year of new participants, but you see more of the Volantines returning than new ones.
It's good news.
So it's not hard to fill up that Volantene program. But I'm sure I can push this question when Agardo presents later on this year, and he can have a better answer for you.
Fantastic. Well, kudos to the Volantene Program by Agardo and the presentation that you just showed us today. So, great job. Thank you. Moving on to, unless there's any other questions, ready for David. Moving on to the Commissioner's Report. We have one item on the agenda for our Commissioner's Report. Dave, Joseph?
Yeah, the next item is Flag Football at the request of Commissioner Ortiz at our last meeting. We put this on the agenda. And by way of background, I know Commissioner Pastor has been on the Commission for a long time, some new folks. There was a flag football program in Daily City for many years. And following the 2015-16 budget years, so that would have been the fall of 2015, so four years ago, the program was eliminated. It was part of widespread budget cuts, not only across our department, across the entire city. So a number of programs were eliminated, as well as quite a few positions. In fact, I made a presentation earlier today to a different board about, on the library side, how in 2008, we had 24 full-time employees in the library. 2019, we have 16 positions. So there were cuts across all departments and all divisions and programs. And it was a painful time. Denise and I, and others, spent a lot of time hand-wringing over trying to get these, balance the city's budgets, what we're doing. And at that time, you can see from the, I think you got the handout, the expenditure for the program was over $50,000 by the end. And participation was dropping. And, you know, we like to strive for some cost recovery in our programs, you know, knowing that the city subsidizes virtually everything that we do in recreation, you know, including the Summer Youth Program. But we try to get closer to, you know, 75, 80% cost recovery when feasible. We were much lower than that here, about 20%, cost recovery. And with participating, participation dropping and staff shrinking, that was one of the programs that was eliminated going into fiscal year 2016, 17. So we spent some time with Commissioner Ortiz last week, and there was a strong desire to revive the program. I fully support the concept of reviving the program, which is the constraints, we're still under the same constraints we were at at the time. In fact, I would actually say we're under even worse constraints now because we've lost another full-time position this fiscal year. Remember, Pequot Bell's position was not filled. So that was one more full-time position eliminated. And with the current workload on the full-time staff there, it would be very hard to add one more program to anybody. So, and we've already got our Fall brochure. If you didn't, we didn't bring copies at the fall. So all the fall programming is already online. And we didn't have flag football in there, other than for a skills class. So we're talking in concept with Commissioner Ortiz about maybe finding a way in the next eight months or so to bring flag football back for next fall. And I feel like I'm doing a lot of talking. This is really, this is Nate's passion. I want to give you a little background. And Nate can fill you in on the steps that he's taken and talk about the partnership he has with the 49ers and where this might go.
So we definitely had a great meeting last week. As Joseph mentioned, Denise was also there. And pretty much laid out everything in terms of what this could possibly look like. And with the restraints currently in place, and, you know, this is just going to be a little bit of an update because we're going to be continuing these talks in the coming weeks and whatnot. But I just see a little bit of hope in it. Even for this year, we were talking about ways of bringing it this fall with a lot of help through volunteerism. I know that there's been a cut within the last couple of years, or not a cut, but it would be less of an interest, it appears, with the numbers, with less teams as the years go by, shrinking from 2013 with six teams in Pee-wee, going down to four teams in 2015. And I look at Pee-wee specifically because those are the ones that's going to fill the teams later on in the years coming forward. And, but I feel like there's been a little bit of resurgence here in Daily City with the summer program that we did with the 49ers. We've had around 100 people total between the two sites, students, I would say, that filled both of those programming up. And there's a possibility to have the growth of it continue if we were to get this program back. But like I said, we're going to continue our talks. I guess the biggest update is the opportunity for funding. I actually met with the County Supervisor's Office, Kenapa's Office, and we talked about potentially using Measure K for this. But like I said, this is going to be included in all of our talks moving forward. But other than that, for now, it's a lot of, for me personally, I got a lot of work to do on my plate in organizing the community. See, because the only possibility to really bring this up would be a lot of volunteers and community members' backs to carry this program. But if we could continue building the culture of this flag football in Daily City that has took a little bit of a pause for the last few years, I really believe in this, for our opportunity to bring it back. But that's about it.
He's being very modest. He left out one important, critical detail. Commissioner Ortiz has volunteered to head this effort up going forward. So we certainly will support with the fields. And we're going to do an inventory of all the existing equipment. We didn't get rid of the equipment we had back in 2015, so we held on to that, to see where our starting point is, maybe even some jerseys and flags. And take an inventory of what we have, what we need, and try to come up with some costs, and go from there. You know, I think he's right. The spirit of volunteerism in Daily City is as strong as ever. And, you know, Friday afternoon after I met with Nate, I met with Allison from the Giants Community Fund, who's wrapping, who just wrapped up this year's Junior Giants program. And she had a phenomenal bunch of volunteers again to make that thing go. And, you know, there are people out there. So, I mean, you know, hopefully I'll have an opportunity to engage them in different ways going forward.
So, through the chair, just a question.
You are the chair.
Yeah. But with the program having 100 participants this past summer, is there kind of like a springboard into the fall months of the remainder of this year to kind of like get a Pee-wee program going with that same group?
Yeah. Just to correct it, it was around 80. We had 80 participants, 20 at the Gellert site, and we had 60 at the David Row Field. And what we talked about is not necessarily have one division, but change the rules of the league from before to have less per team. So then it gives the opportunity for a volunteer coach to have less families to communicate with. And at the same time, it's pretty standard now that, because before, let's say, for example, Pee-wee would have seven players per team, or that has to be on the field at once, right?
Yeah.
And then the junior league would end up having nine per team. And then plus, you'd have more players to play defense. And so it would be around 15 to 20 per team. But now, the way we're looking at it is if we shrink the teams, we adapt a little bit of different rules, then we could have, we could work with like five to seven per team. And it would be a lot more easier for our volunteer coaches to have a stronger commitment to whether, where either a particular field that they're at, or a community that they want to represent, it'll be a little bit easier for them.
So, it sounds like you got a springboard or a good word of mouth of the first group that started?
Most definitely.
Yeah, and that can help the next year's summer, I guess, for the, if there isn't a program in the fall, but help for springboarding into the next summer program.
Yeah, and definitely. And if we, if we're not able to do it this fall, we're still going to be in the talks to launch it by next fall. And best believe, I'll be continuing my organizing to get this community built up as long as I need to, so.
So, is the, one of the challenges is not so much the participants and getting them indoctrinated and schooled into the Pee-wee program, for starters, but is there a, reaching out to the community for funds that you're looking to help have come from the community, so to speak, that you're looking to have some ideas on that?
You know, that's a good point. Not quite sure what mechanisms we have in terms of doing that. I know the one, the only way I thought of was perhaps Measure K funding, just because it's particular for after-school programming or programming specific. But in terms of raising funds, I'm not quite sure what mechanisms we have yet. But I would discuss it with you guys before anything, you know?
Yeah, that gets a little trickier.
Yeah, yeah, within the confines of...
A lot of what we're competing with you, or these other, well, especially basketball, but other organized leagues that are out there now, most of them are organized as nonprofit groups, 501(c)(3), which gives them the ability to do fundraising and things like that.
Right.
So, you know, we can certainly talk about that as an option.
Okay.
Using the city as a vehicle for fundraising. But again, you know, we've got competing interests. We are fundraising like crazy, especially for our cultural arts events. And I know on the library side, too, there's no stone unturned in Daily City.
Right.
When it comes to asking for funds to help support
Right.
activities in the community. So, it's certainly an option.
Well, thanks for the energy.
I have a question. What about the 49ers? What they have said to you? What is their posture about this program? How they want to support it? What is their idea?
No, for sure. So, basically, the relationship that we currently have with them is, I've been working with the Boys and Girls Club out of Bay Shore to, and collaborate with them, utilizing their sites. And it would be the location for the programming, right? And then for the 49ers programming, but their programming is specific for the summertime. Currently, right now, I know they're in the works of making it all year round. So until I get word from them, I know they usually give us the first word because we piloted their program two years ago initially. But, yeah, until they create their program to be all year round, then we can't really do anything with it. But in terms of reaching out to them, there's something that's definitely in the possibility.
Yeah, because I think they also will have benefit from training little kids who will like that sport, you know? You never know.
I mean, if they do make it an all-year-round program, I'm sure we could utilize that in terms of, let's say, funding for material, or having them pay for a lot of the equipment that we need year to year. But we would have to have a conversation with them and see what they'd be able to do.
Right. Thank you, Nathan.
No, for sure.
Appreciate it. Okay. We have several announcements that are on, remain here on our agenda this evening. Joseph, can you relay them to us here?
The Jag Team, I'll do it.
Yes.
I'll let David. David has something very important to share with us.
Oh, go ahead.
Not necessarily. Not necessarily important. I got a little nervous, and I totally forgot to give a nice shout-out to all the staff that made this summer a wonderful summer. So the staff at the site leads and the assistant site leads at Westlake, Brian, Dylan, Jessica, and PJ; the staff at Hillside, Jorge and Sarah; Marchbanks, Cherry and Mick; at Geller, we had Shen, Delilah, Sid, and Tiana, and Rod; our specialists, Carolyn, Brittany, and of course, Jeff, Jeff Buring. So we needed to give them a little shout-out to say thank you to them as well.
To Ruby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Yes, they did. I will echo that, because, you know, like Commissioner Flamenco, my kid was at Westlake for a couple of weeks, and just watching the staff there, and even though, you see it every year, but to get up close, they do a tremendous job and really do a great job of engaging the kids, and again, keeping the parents happy, which, you know, that's a huge accomplishment. You have no idea how difficult that can be sometimes. So thank you to all the staff that supported David in the program.
Good job.
Okay, now we'll move on to our very important announcements. Right around the corner...
What the next?
I'm going to go off, I'm going to go off the agenda for a bit too, because even before we get to our first one, there's one that's not on here, but I want to share with you and with the public that might be watching, our audience today. The Daly City Public Library Associates are hosting their second Crazy About Cars event, and that's going to happen the week before our next event, and that is Saturday, September 14th. That is going to be at the Ceremony Shopping Center. There will be classic cars there, there's going to be some games and competitions, there's going to be a stage, I believe, with three live bands they have playing, raffle, food, and benefits our Daly City Public Libraries. It's, I'm looking forward to it. It sounds like it's going to be a really spectacular event.
Okay.
What time, I believe, I don't know what the time is. I want to say from noon to 3:00. How about that, Denise? Noon to 3:00?
So at the Ceremony Library or...
No, at the Ceremony Shopping Center, out towards Macy's, near the, where the Farmer's Market will be that Saturday.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll be really well-marked because they're going to have a stage and a lot of classic cars. Okay, then, back on to the agenda. Latinx Placita Daly City is going to be our annual Latino Heritage Month celebration here at City Hall on Saturday, September 21st. That, Denise, will be from noon to 3:00 p.m. That I know. And it'll be right outside City Hall, so we're hoping for some nice weather. We did, last year, we kind of gambled and had it outside after, normally, we, for years and years, we did it inside the gym at War Memorial. We thought, you know, make it feel more like a community event, do it outdoors, and of course, last year was really, really cold, but we're crossing our fingers that'll be a nice day. And then the next event after that, in conjunction with the supporters of the Dolger Senior Center, which is the nonprofit board of directors, the 501(c)(3) that helps support the Dolger Senior Center, it's the annual Fall Festival. That is Saturday, October 6th, and that's from 8:30 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon. There's breakfast, pancake breakfast in the morning, and raffles and all sorts of fun activities and live music, and there's a bake sale and all kinds of stuff, so. Pardon? Oh, and David's baking stuff for the bake sale. And, you know, if you, if you go there early and you stay late, there's a lot to see, but it's at the very end when things kind of get a little crazy and they have the leftover pancakes, they have the pancake toss, which is always great fun.
It is Sunday.
Did I say Saturday?
I wrote Saturday.
Oh, yes. I read Saturday because it says Saturday, but it's not Saturday. It's Sunday, 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 and usually, barring any emergency calls, it's usually very well-supported by the Daly City firefighters who help flip pancakes there in the kitchen there. So hope to see you guys there. And then the granddaddy of all events, the Casa Yahan Sa Daly City, our annual Filipino History Month celebration, will return for the third consecutive year to Marchbank Park on Saturday, October 12th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Of course, the event is free, and if you are planning to go, I encourage people to use the existing parking garage at the south end of DC Station on Unabue Row Sarah and access the park from the parking structure. It'll be a lot easier than trying to find parking in the neighborhood and winding away, which has been a little bit of an issue the last couple of years. We really are encouraging people to use that parking structure. It's super easy. If you're on the second level of the parking structure, it dumps you right into the entrance of Casa Yahan Sa Daly City. So get there early, get a good parking spot, and enjoy. There's going to be all sorts of wonderful entertainment again, and our good friends from Gilman Brewey will return serving beer for the third time, and I think there'll be three or four food trucks.
Great.
And I'm not going to go into much more detail because we've got a couple of months, and I will say that Chairperson Christina Luna is very intimately involved in the planning, so she'll probably give you some more details at the next meeting.
Right.
Any more announcements, Denise? Okay, those are our announcements for this evening.
Well, one thing I'd like to share at this point is that every day, when I pass by the Geller Field, and I wish I could do that every day at the other fields in Daly City, I see it fully occupied on the playground. And it's just nice to see the facilities being used, especially the tennis courts, the basketball courts, and out in the field, on the soccer field, even when we have the parochial schools using it from time to time, it's a great activity to see the facilities being used and how maintained they are. And so kudos to the staff for doing that and keeping it safe for the public, so.
You know, I'm going to add on to that, too. Commissioner Ortiz mentioned Measure K funding, and I think we've talked about it before, but I'll share again. Thanks to Supervisor David Canepa, we are beneficiaries of over $900,000 in Measure K funds that will be infused over at Geller Park. We're going to have a new outdoor freestanding restroom. They're going to totally redo the surface of the tennis courts and basketball courts, improve the outdoor lighting there, and make some improvements to the picnic shelter. Not the actual structure, but underneath. So we're extremely appreciative of the generous taxpayers in Daly City, or San Mateo County in general. The timeline is probably about a year from now.
Yeah.
But exciting times because we've desperately wanted some improvements to those tennis courts, and Supervisor Canepa heard our call and answered our request, so looking forward to that. Pardon? And the playground. Yes, sorry. Playground, new bathroom, improvements at the picnic shelter and the courts in life.
Okay. Thank you, David Canepa, for spearheading that Measure K for Daly City. And for those of you that were listening today that recognize some familiar names that David was mentioning of the leaders in the programs that he was presenting, you see them shopping, you see them in the community, give them a thank you as well. So you'll recognize their names, and you see them out there, give them a big thank you. So unless there's any other items on the agenda you need to discuss, do I get a motion to close this evening's meeting?
A motion?
Okay. Those in favor of closing the evening's meeting do say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.